Calling this meeting to order. The South River Mayor and Borough Council Meeting Number Six, held on March twenty second, two thousand and twenty one. Welcome all of you. We'll have the statement of notice of publication, Mr. Brain.
In compliance with chapter two thirty one of Public Laws nineteen seventy five, notice that this meeting was given by way of annual notice five with Borough Clerk from News Tribune, The Sentinel, and post on the bulletin board in the Borough South River Municipal Building. Be it further advised, Mayor and Council Borough South River, hold this regular meeting on Monday, March twenty second, two thousand and one, at seven P M via online video conference provided by Zoom, presuming to the positions of the New Jersey of the Board of Meetings Act, NJSA ten colon four dash eight B. This meeting will be held by means of use of electronic communication equipments due to COVID nineteen pandemic. No members in public should be permitted to physically attend the meeting. The public hours invited to attend the meeting electronically. Mayor Council will take formal action at this meeting. The borough is using this format to mitigate the chances of exposure to COVID nineteen as part of the borough's ongoing efforts to slow the rate of transmission and avoid overwhelming our treatment sentences. This action may be enforced while existing meetings are otherwise notified by public notice.
Thank you, Mr. Brain. We have real call.
Mayor Krenzel.
Here.
Councilman Ballas.
Here.
Councilman Seula.
Here.
Councilman Gindy.
Here.
Councilman Kuchenski.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Mayor.
Yeah.
Council President Pritchard.
Here.
Very good. Let us have the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. I ask that you have a moment of silence. Thank you. Continuing with our agenda. We have one proclamation. I'm not going to read all of it. It is posted. It is quite lengthy, but it is important. So I'm going to read the salient features of its salient paragraphs. Whereas Congress designated the third full week in March to be National Poison Prevention Week in nineteen sixty one, and since then, this week has helped to raise national awareness of the dangers of potentially dangerous medicines, household products and chemicals, environmental contaminants, and other substances. And whereas the New Jersey Poison Control Center, a division of the Department of Emergency Medicine at Rutgers New Jersey Medical School, provides twenty-four seven expert medical treatment advice, drug information, and prevention education at no cost to the public through the Poison Help Hotline. And whereas unintentional poisoning is the leading cause of unintentional injury death in New Jersey outnumbering deaths by motor vehicle and firearms. And whereas a poison is defined as anything that can cause harm if taken in the wrong amount, in the wrong way, by the wrong person. And whereas although most reported poison exposures involve children five years old and younger, most poisoning deaths occur in adults aged twenty to fifty-nine. And whereas Poison Center experts encourage the public not to guess, wait for symptoms, or waste time looking up medical information online when potential poisoning exposures occur, to call one eight hundred two 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 one two two two, or text nine seven three 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 nine zero seven zero two, or chat at W W W dot N J P I E S dot org. And whereas all residents should save the Poison Help Hotline in their cell, home, and office phones because a fast response can make all the difference in preventing serious injury and saving lives. Now therefore, I, John M. Krenzel, Mayor of the Borough of South River, along with the members of the Borough Council, to hereby proclaim the week of March twenty first to twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-one, as National Poison Prevention Week in South River, and encourage all citizens to pledge their commitment to ensuring safety of themselves, their families, and their community. Given under my hand the seal of the Borough of South River, New Jersey, this twenty-second day of March, two thousand and twenty-one. Quite something about those statistics there. And just what exactly is a poison? It's a good idea that proclamation will be posted so that you will be able to look at the number. Moving on with the agenda, the executive session. There is no executive session, so we're going to move on to our business portion of the meeting tonight. That is the agenda session. There are four topics to be discussed. If you and the public would like to make comments, there is the public comment section. After our report, you can make some comments. There is no action to be taken tonight on these matters. We're just discussing them, trying to see which way we're going to go on this. The first one is no parking on Pottery Lane. I'm going to call for comments. I spoke to the person who has been involved with this. The police have also reached out to her, and she likes the idea as to what it is. I will open it up to you. Are there any comments?
I had a couple of comments from people on Pottery Lane. And with the no parking fine, but they would rather have a one-way out to Main Street. That's.
I said that a long time ago.
Yeah, we had that discussion years ago. I mean, we can't revisit it. But John, remember, that goes back, I mean, when Bob Saget was mayor, when you and I run the council, that was kicking around for years. And Bruce may be able to shed some light on why we, but there was, there was, there was a reason why we did it, and I don't, I don't remember what it is. But I know Tony and Donna have mentioned this previously, but I don't remember what the reasons were, Mayor, but I remember you and I were involved in that discussion in the early two thousands.
Bruce, do you remember?
I apologize, Mr. Eppinger and Council Mayor. I don't recall what the reason was, whether it was the turning radius, but I'm only, I'd be guessing if I were to give you an answer.
Chief, do you remember?
I don't. I don't remember. Mayor, from what I remember back, I believe it was two thousand, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, Deputy Chief, Chief John Boothlet had me do a survey back then on the, whether or not they would want there to be a one-way coming in from Main Street or going out into Main Street. And I think that area on Pottery Lane and Palowski and all the surrounding areas there, it came in close to a fifty-fifty split on which way they wanted the one-way to come in. A lot of people wanted the one-way to come in from Main Street off Pottery.
All right.
Other people wanted to, you know, to go the opposite way. I think the opposite way from Pottery going out to Main Street is the issue of turning onto Main Street heading towards East Brunswick. And since it was a fifty-fifty split, I think the matter just went to the wayside, and we just left it the way it was.
The parking up there is pretty limited. So, hey, Chief, if we, if we didn't make it where it was coming up Palowski to Pottery to Main Street, this way, we put the do not enter signs on Main Street, the people will be able to pull out on the Main Street. And if they have to come onto Palowski, they can always go down Prospect, I mean, I'm sorry, Jackson Street to Wilson and come back up that way.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I think that would be a. I think the issue was crossing over that traffic from Pottery, heading up Main Street towards, towards the Devo area.
Because I understand, I mean, that's a tight area up there for parking, too.
Yeah.
It's a problem that exists everywhere in town. And that is that, yes, there are some places that you don't have a problem, but in the older sections of town, where a house used to have one or two cars, now there are three or four cars, and there just isn't the space. So, and this is a problem. This is why in one of the houses up there, you see those large rocks that were placed there because people were driving on the lawn to get around because there wasn't enough space to park the cars. So. Are there any other?
Well, Mayor, we've got two different, we're talking about two different issues here. We've got the parking issue, which is on our agenda. And also, as the council folks have brought up, we also, we are also dealing with the, with the direct, with the direction. It's just from my two cents, it may be something we want to address at the same time. If, if we're going to address anything, I know, I don't know, Chief, I don't, I'm assuming that, yeah, you're right, it had to be two thousand and eight or around then. Do we want to have the neighborhood surveyed again for that part of this, as far as whether they, whether they would be interested in having, excuse me, Potter Lane being one-way, and if so, which direction? But then also, I think we'd have to get the chief in traffic safety involved about, as he said, as he's mentioned a couple of times now. If you're pulling out of Potter Lane only one-way and then trying to head up Main Street, that could be, that could be an issue, that could be an issue too as well. So I think it's, I know, I know you're, the residents that the mayor have been talking to, this has just been a pretty serious issue in their neighborhoods. I don't want to just kick the can down the street, but I think if we're going to resolve, if we're going to try to resolve this, I don't know, would it make, you know, again, thinking outside the box, if you make it one-way without allow for only to have, maybe have parking on one side of the street and not the other? I don't know. I don't know how any of that would work, but is that something we want to take a look at?
Also, coming out onto Main Street, just imagine trying to make a right turn. It's not a ninety-degree angle.
I think that, I think the thing you have on your agenda today actually will clear up that parking issue there because it's, the road is very narrow in that area there from Main Street onto Pottery. Regardless of whichever way you're going to, you know, make the one-way, which direction you do it. I think that's something that you need to rectify right away, or not right away, but you need to rectify even without the one-way. The one-way issue I remember from, if I recall properly, in the past, the people on Pottery Lane wanted the traffic to flow from Main Street onto Pottery because otherwise, in order for them to get to their houses, they would have to go all the way down Jackson and come all the way around. If I remember correctly, that's what the issue was back then. But maybe, maybe Coach, maybe you might have new neighbors there.
Yeah, plus we got to remember too about the, you know, the emergency vehicles. God forbid you need to get a truck in there for an emergency. You got to be able to make sure that thing, you know, there's room to swing a truck in there.
Also a problem there. So, all right, we will send this over back to the Public Safety Committee and have them review this and give us their thoughts in the future there. Parking of commercial vehicles. Mr. Eppinger, you, I think, brought this up to us. Your comments?
Um, you know, this is part of a larger situation that we've been dealing with in town. And I call, I call it the R-zone problem. There's a residential zone problem. Have had a number of complaints of people reaching out and saying, hey, look, it, you know, I've got dump trucks parked next to me, you know. Again, we go back to, as the mayor mentioned, and it comes up a lot now. We have, you know, we've got a lot of areas in town where we have forty by hundred, fifty by hundred lots, and, you know, you have these, we have construction vehicles. And not, we're not talking about pickup. That's some of the reasons for the discussion tonight, everyone, is there's been, is, is to try to determine the size and the tonnage of the vehicles that we would like to try to, try to keep, keep out of, out of residential zones. Again, this started, I had Andrea ask the borough attorney to look into this. We are by far not the only town that's done this. Like, most towns, in fact, a couple of council members have reached out to me and said, you know, they know that other, other communities have done this as well. And I guess it goes back, I always like to call it reasonable expectations. If I buy a house in an R-zone, in a residential zone, I have an expectation that what's going to be my neighbors? Houses, their vehicles, their families and stuff like that. I would expect that there's not going to be a, a machine shop, you know, a house next door, people going to be running businesses out of their house without permits, that we're not going to have illegal rooming houses, you know, we're dealing with those problems as well. And again, I understand that we've got people who have, you know, commercial vehicles of a certain size. We're talking about, you know, pickup trucks and stuff like that. But this is becoming an issue. I've had, like I said, I've had a number, I've had a number of residents, you know, about not only parking on the street, but parking in, you know, right next door where they wake up in the morning and there's dump trucks, you know, right in their driveway and stuff like that. And that's not, I don't, my personal opinion is that that's not a reasonable expectation for someone living in a zone that bought a house in an R-zone. Now, you can certainly park commercial vehicles in a mixed, in a mixed zone, you can, or in a commercial zone, or in an industrial zone, or in a, or in a proper storage facility, you know, a parking surface or a garage. I, that's not what this is about. This is specifically addressing and looking for your input on commercial, large commercial vehicles on properties in, in zoned residential areas. And so that's, you know, that's what, that's what this is about. This is to try to, to give some relief. We know we've got, I know that she's been involved in a number of these. I know a number of the council members here have, have, have come forward to the police and code enforcement about whether it be idling trucks or, or just the parking of these very large construction vehicles in residential neighborhoods. So that's why this is on the agenda. That's why it's not on for first reading because, again, the mayor and I felt that it was most important that everybody get a chance to say their piece, ask questions. And like I said, I had Andrea, Andrea prepared to discuss if necessary about, you know, other towns and stuff like that. So that's what I've got, Mayor.
Okay. Thoughts, comments on this?
No, there are some around town that do block your vision to see what's coming out of another street. I've seen that in a couple of places. People not, well, complaining or mentioning when they start up whatever their trucks are with the diesel, with the fumes. Now, the summer's coming, they don't have to idle them as long. But, and just the noise in the morning, I, you know. For me, I don't have to get up that early in the morning. I don't want, I wouldn't want to be woken up at six o'clock with the beep, beep, beeping of a truck. Or whatever. And I, I get it. They expect some, some peace in their, in their homes. So I think we should really look into it.
I think, I, Donna, I agree with you. We should look at, you know, a pickup truck is one thing. Anything that's got four wheels on an axle or larger should not be parked in any R-zone. I don't, either on the street, in the driveway, it shouldn't be there. I know I've gotten complaints from some residents on, you know, they're backed into their driveways. They start their truck up in the morning, and the diesel fumes are going inside their house because their windows are open. And that shouldn't be happening. So I agree that we have to really look into, like I said, a pickup truck is one thing. Anything with four wheels on a, on a single axle or, you know, double axles or anything bigger. I mean, I don't know if there's a weight that we could put into this or, but they shouldn't be parked in any residential zone.
And two, two points on that, Councilman. Number one, we're obviously not talking about, like, if you've got somebody doing work at your house, not talking about somebody can't park in your yard or park in the street while, while construction is being done or works being done, obviously not. That's, that, that's.
That's totally different.
Certainly completely different, exactly. And the other thing is, and this is really where I know the Borough Attorney, the mayor, myself, the chief, traffic safety from the police department, the conundrum is the weight. Because that's how most of these, and Andrea, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, most of these ordinances from sample ordinances that you've got from other clients of yours or that you've sampled, the weight is really what, what, what determines the size. And, and as you've mentioned, and as other people have mentioned, you've now got residents and stuff like that with, say, for example, a Ford F, you know, three fifty. They're a pretty big, pretty big trucks and of a certain weight. And again, we certainly, we certainly want residents to be able to have whatever vehicles they want on, you know, and we're dealing with commercial plates and also the, all these other kind of issues. But, but the issue that I'm sensing, or that we've been going back and forth over, is the weight. You know, how big of a, how big is big? How big is too big?
The big thing, too, is if, if we have, if somebody has a pickup truck, and it's got, it's a duly. Chevy makes them, Ford makes them, and it's a, it's a personal vehicle. That's a different story.
Exactly.
This is, if it's a commercial vehicle, that's a duly, it shouldn't be parked there, especially if it's a diesel. If it's a single axle, you know, single wheel, and it's parked on the street, that's a whole different story. You know what I'm saying? Anything that people are backing into their driveways, dump trucks with, with four wheels on a rear axle, that's where we have to really look into and say, they don't belong in a residential neighborhood. They belong in a yard somewhere where they can fire them up. We had an incident down on Charles Street where a guy was parking the tractor of an eighteen-wheeler in the parking lot and starting it at two o'clock in the morning. And all the residents were complaining about it. It was waking him up at two o'clock in the morning.
Mayor, if I may, what does our ordinance say now?
Uh, if I may, you currently don't have an ordinance prohibiting commercial vehicles from parking in private driveways in your residential zones. You do have an ordinance that prohibits your commercial vehicles over four tons from parking on the streets within a specified time. I believe there's a time in there. And I can send you the ordinance number if you would like, but you don't have one that specifically addresses this. Now, the initial draft of this ordinance, what, how we drafted it was, we just followed your prohibition from your streets, which was four tons. That's where the four tons came from. So in your streets, you're prohibited trucks to be parked overnight that are, that have a rated weight of over four tons. And that's where that came from. So here, this is where the, obviously, what Council President said, this is where the conundrum comes in, is what is, what is council's pleasure on what they want to prohibit in driveways? But that's what your current ordinance says for the streets.
I think one thing to take into consideration would be the size of the vehicle, too.
Right.
If it's an oversized vehicle, it does present a bit of a hazard, especially in a residential neighborhood. You know, you could understand someone having a recreational vehicle and then possibly going on vacation the next day, parking it in the street to make an early exit in the morning. But to leave it there permanently, it's a hazard. Especially to vision.
The other issue is you have a lot of people that are not only parking on a driveway, but now they're actually parking on the grass area, which is in previous coverage. They think it's okay, although they think they own the property. Code enforcement shows that you're not supposed to park your car on pavement, rather than pavement. So people are taking advantage of. I know during snow days, you see people trying to take their cars off of the roads, and they're, they're helping DPW as well as helping their neighbors to get their roads cleaned.
Yeah, that's different.
That's different. But a lot of people are, perfect example is Mono Street. I know a house that he squeezes two cars. Meanwhile, it's a one-car garage, a one-car driveway. And yes, the neighbor's complaining. That's just an example. But when it comes down to four tons, that's equivalent to ten thousand pounds. Your average duly is right around eighty-five to nine thousand pounds. Your average Mason dump is well over ten thousand pounds. DOT says anything over ten thousand pounds, guess what? You're exceeding the gross weight of a vehicle, and you need permits for that. So.
I mean, is it over ten thousand pounds? You can't even drive on the Parkway.
You cannot put it on a Parkway, correct. It could be ten thousand point one, and guess what? You're not allowed on a Parkway. And that's what DOT shows. Yeah, and that's what they, they show. So, I mean, yes, I have neighbors that they come home with Mason dumps. I got one, two houses away, and he shows up. Sure enough, I hear him at four o'clock in the morning. And yes, the whole entire road smells, and, you know, you got his immediate neighbor that's filling up the whole house with diesel fumes. And granted, you know, could it be harmful? Absolutely. After time, yeah, it absolutely can. But something has to be set where if the message is not going out to the employee, it's going out to the, the owner of that company. And that's where our problem is. So, I mean, we got to do something.
I agree.
Then there, there are some companies, I know, they have multiple. It's one after the other, after the other, just parked right. And they just, I don't know, it just, it makes a little scary situation when you're trying to go down that street.
If, question that was asked before, you tried to answer it, Borough Attorney. You looked at other towns. What do other towns do?
Um, the, it's generally between four and up to, I mean, fourteen, four tons, or there's one for fourteen thousand pounds. I believe Middlesex Borough was one for fourteen thousand pounds. They're the ones that are your immediate neighbor. Uh, yeah, fourteen thousand pounds. And sometimes I get a little confused in the tons and pounds, but, so Middlesex Borough prohibits fourteen thousand pounds, truck, commercial vehicles over fourteen thousand pounds.
Seven tons.
Seven tons, thank you.
Okay. The majority is under the fourteen. Okay.
It could be understandable if it's, you know, ten thousand pounds or exceeding a specific limit. That might have to be the way that the ordinance would be written. If we decide to pass an ordinance.
Yeah, but like Pete said, some of the pickup trucks can, the duly's can, you know, for personal vehicles, they can weigh, you know, seven, eight thousand pounds. But again, if it's a commercial vehicle that's a duly, then that's a whole different ballgame. You know, so it could be, you know, four tons or five tons on a commercial vehicle, then that shouldn't be parked on the street or in the driveway. But if it's a personal vehicle, and it's your own, you know, private, you know, you live there, it's your house, by all means, you park your vehicle in your driveway. But that's where, the biggest thing is the commercial vehicles now, because they're not, I mean, that's where all the complaints are coming from. All these vehicles parked in driveways or on the streets where you can't see, or they're running them, and it's going into the neighbor's houses.
It actually adds to the congestion in the township, too, because you're playing leapfrog when you're driving down some of the streets.
I get the impression that, of course, we don't want to punish one with, you know, who has an eight thousand pound truck, registered commercial, and one eight thousand pounds and not registered commercial. One, we said, well, you can't park your truck here, but the other guy can park his truck there. It sounds like we want something, no commercial vehicles parked in driveways and such.
Right.
But also an upper limit for residential. Because you could have a residential, it has been suggested in South River for fourteen thousand pounds. It's a walking big truck.
It's a big truck.
No. And I think that would also cause a problem, whether it's commercial, registered commercial or not.
All right.
We'll send this also back to the public safety to have them roll this over. Thank you for your comments. The master plan reexamination report, you've all received a copy of it. The planning board has adopted this. Do you, but they're also seeking some comments from us. Would we like to? I think the idea is, this was basically a start. And from this outline here, which is essentially what it is, to go onward and reexamine the master plan in detail. So do you have any comments that we could send back to the planning board? In general, in looking at this, my view is that, yes, I want them to look at everything, and then there's a few other matters also to discuss. Because there is a lot of work going on in South River. The planning and zoning boards, as Mr. Linduski can tell you, is going to be swamped with a lot of work. So we want to see what, you know, we want to give some guidance. If there is going to be redevelopment in South River, then let's make sure that we are going to help with the redevelopment, but also to control it so it's best for the citizens.
Well, do we, from the governing body, Mr. Mayor, do we send back a correspondence or something like that that says, hey, look, it, we, you know, we, we've read your, Mr. Bignell from Todd's report of December twenty first, when we, when the council fully supports a complete reexamination of the, of the master plan in light of the fact that we feel that there's going to be lots of construction redevelopment that's going to be going on over the next several years? Something that's simple? Or are we looking, are they looking for something much more like, you know, do this, do this, do this? Because I think that's, if I remember from the last master plan examination, it's really, that's what we, you know, once we have, once we have the planner and the, and their attorney, and, and, and the, there was also public hearings and, and as well as, that's just, not just the planning board itself weighing in.
I think that was because of the fact that it had not been looked at in so many years.
Right.
Right.
It was a bottom to top reexamination. This, I think, is going to be more of a tweaking that is going on in light of what happened with Sandy and others. But I I like if there are no major comments about it or even little comments about it, then I suggest that we have Mr. Bray do exactly what Mr. Epinger said, send a letter back and say, we like what you're doing. Go for it.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, yes.
If I may, a few years back, I had requested also from the zoning board. They were supposed to do an annual review of all the stuff that they do get in zoning. Maybe that'll be helpful if we have the ones from the last 10 years from zoning to be able to give to the planning board. Just so they have an idea of the things that are constantly going to zoning that could be fixed in the planning, in the master plan.
Yes, that's right.
Makes sense. That's why we have, that makes sense. It was one of the reasons why we did this, the driveway ordinance last year, right? We were getting all those, all the driveways going to, you know, going that really, that really shouldn't have, that was just a, you know, waste of people's time and money. So that's, I think that's a fair, that's a fair comment and that would make a lot of sense.
So Landensky, would you send that over with the letter?
Yes, Mayor. Mr. Bignell's and Mr. Bletcher's report does have everything that happened to the planning and zoning board. He might have been for the last five years. I'm not exactly remembering. But he he did chart it, what type of work, what type of approvals and denial that went on. And that's part of his report and that's something that the planning board said that they are going to break out into working groups and look at along with the discussion on the waterfront zone. There's some talk about changing some of the script of words where it really can't be developed too much anymore. Maybe you just take it down to the pre-existing uses of equipment storage and stuff like that. So they are going to be breaking up into working groups and coming back with suggestions.
Very good then. Is there anyone else? No? Then Mr. Bray, make it so. Last but not least, I'll go back to Mr. Landensky, annual fireworks. What did comments did you want to make about that?
Well, the question is, the the recreation director comes back to work. Of course, we have to give her some guidance as to whether or not the council wishes to have fireworks. It's going to be hard for July 1st, for July 4th, because they're booking up now. But we normally have the end of the summer. That's a decision for to be budgeted for for public events. And we're just looking for some input from the council, whether or not you want her to pursue it.
If, if I may, um, it's my understanding that the track is going to be replaced as soon as school is finished. They're going to be doing work there and possibly it will not be completed till the middle of August. So there could solve, you can't do anything in July because they're going to be working up at the field.
I would suggest. We don't know with COVID as to which way we're going to be going. So Mr. Giddy, I interrupted you.
That's okay. I would suggest what we did last year, where we at least held a date for the month of August. In worst case scenario, if COVID still exists to the magnitude that we have today, we would cancel it pretty much towards the last minute. She will be reinstated, obviously, on April 1st, so she would be up to date with what we're doing as well as her being able to hold a date for August. Where next meeting, we would talk more about the fireworks show.
I would agree with, I would agree with Councilman Giddy. That makes the, he makes the most sense. As late in August as possible, hold the event if, you know, let's hope, let's hope that everybody, you know, that can, that can and will be vaccinated and we're at a point where, I don't know. I think, I think the idea of holding, let's, let's get it, let's get something held. And if we can't have it, so be it. And if we can't have it, we're we're in good shape.
Already, already setting it up.
Yeah. And as we all know, that it's all, one of the other reasons why we've done it, you know, in the past, at the end of August, was the end of summer show. And also, pardon the pun, but we used to get more bang for the buck, right? Because at the end, everybody's trying to do it around July 4th. And we do it at the end of the summer, we were getting more for our dollar. And and by the crowds that showed up at Denny's Stadium, that would, it certainly was quite popular. So.
Yeah, sure is.
End of summer, welcoming back to school, goodbye COVID.
It may be if we're lucky, we could have a mask burning ceremony.
Mayor, I'll reach out to the facility supervisor for the Board of Education to talk about the work on the track. I also know that they just repaved the parking lot.
Yes.
I'll get their feelings on that.
Very good.
Okay.
Plus we, plus we may be able to incorporate something into our 300th anniversary at the event.
Good point, James. Yep, very good point.
Happy 301st birthday, South River.
Yeah.
We could just change the sign over 6466 Main Street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
301. So. Very good then. Thank you. Good discussion, lots of good ideas expressed. Of course, there are no right answers. That's what makes sometimes these things difficult. So. Uh, moving on to the agenda, there are no ordinances for second. There are no ordinances for first reading. So we'll have our reports of our professionals and as we do traditionally, we begin with Mr. Koch. Hello, Mr. Koch.
Hello, everybody. Good evening and thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alborn Street, all the punch list items are done, so we'll be able to close on, close that out now. Well, number two replacement, as far as we know, the contractor is still planning to begin in mid-April. The 2020 road program funded by the DOT. I walked through all the roads with a member of my staff to work on what's going to be done on each of them. I just wanted to mention that at Clayton Court on the Willett End, we're going to put a little bump out similar to the one that was constructed at the Raritan Street end or Raritan Avenue end. And that's to enable the construction of a proper handicap ramp there. There's some rough paint marks out there. If anybody's going by, you'll be able to get a general idea of what it would look like. If there's any concerns, please let me know. But with the fence right on the property line and the concrete sidewalk only being four feet wide, we need to do that again in order to get a ramp in there. The 2021 state aid programs, we submitted a proposal for that and we sent the urban sidewalk application documents to the borough. So whenever you're ready to move on that, we will. On your agenda tonight is the award of the contract for the substation maintenance, the high energy electrical testing and also the electric utility audit. This year is kind of the short form with them. So that's why from year to year, you'll see a different price for the proposal. Every other year or every few years, they have a more lengthy form and that takes in a lot more of information that is delivered to them. And that is it. Thank you.
Is any questions for Mr. Koch?
Just one, Bruce. Things going, what we know with the with the well, with the well drilling, we're all still on, still on schedule and where we're supposed to be?
We're on schedule for what we discussed at the last meeting. Yes, we are.
Fair enough.
As far as I know, mid-April and and then get to the drilling and the installation, but then it's the permitting and the timeframe associated with that, sir. Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks, Bruce.
Everybody.
Hey Bruce, one quick question on the on the Clayton Court.
Yes.
A little bump out we're going to do?
Yes.
Um, is that going to hinder anybody from making that left, being that street so narrow? Um, you know, going down Willett Lane?
No.
Will you be okay with that?
Yes, it's because that's one way. No, that's two way, right?
It actually starts one way, but people shoot up off a Miller and they do make the left onto Willett Lane to go up Willett Avenue. I mean, I've seen that a few times.
Yep, it's not as big as the one at the other end and the road is very wide there. Actually, the road could be narrowed if I looked across the street at the apartments and probably more of a project than you would want to embrace. But we could move the urban four feet and have a verge there. But I walked it, I looked at it, it's only rough paint markings. It's nowhere near as big as the other. And there's a pretty nice transition. There's no less of parking. So Tony, if you ride by and see something that concerns you, please feel free to give me a call.
Yeah.
We can chat about it, meet out there, whatever works.
All right, great. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Thank you, Bruce. Have a good night.
Thank you to all.
Good night, Bruce.
Good night, Bruce. Night, everyone. Zanga.
Mayor, a few items on the agenda. Number one, the Borough went out to bid for janitorial services and for public works functions and utility maintenance and you have a resolution to award to Tropical Cleaning Services and also BMW. You have another resolution for contract renewal for auto parts to National Parts and Supply and for electric materials to Wesco. And I assume we'll talk about the budget later on with the, before the introduction, or you want to speak now?
Speak now.
Okay. All right. So I'll just give you a couple of highlights on the 2021 budget. This budget is in compliance with the appropriation and tax levy cap laws. There are no change in rates to electric, water and parking. Rates will remain the same as the prior year. All three utilities are self-liquidating, which means cash receipts in 2020 were sufficient to cover operation, maintenance and debt service costs. Uh, in the electric utility budget, the must, much anticipated battery storage project should be installed and operational by the end of this year. The Borough anticipates the battery capturing the peaks in the summer of 2022, which will result in savings for 2023. Uh, the electric budget also includes the purchase of a bucket truck and LED lights and fixtures on Main, Auburn and Ferry Street. The water budget continues to include capital repairs to the water system, including the treatment plant, water mains, fire hydrants. There's also the purchase of a shed in the water utility this year and tools and equipment. And finally, in the current fund, the 2021 budget was faced with decreasing revenues due to the pandemic and increase in expenditures. Just to give you a little idea, decrease in revenues from municipal court, construction code and host community benefits totaled 220,205 dollars. Increase in expenditures from pension costs, insurance costs, recycling, landfill, sewer treatment and debt service totaled 464,638 dollars and 50 cents from the prior year. The sum of both the decrease in revenues and the increase in expenditures impacted the budget by 684,843 dollars and 50 cents. With that said, the increase in taxes in this budget was 308,205 dollars or 2.04 cents. And the average residential unit assessed at 291,086 dollars and 74 cents will see an increase of 61 dollars and 23 cents a year, 15 dollars and 31 cents a quarter and 5 dollars and 10 cents a month. Projects in the 2021 current fund budget are park improvements and purchase of police vehicles. There were no cuts in services in this budget. And we were also told by the state to continue to use the prior year state aid numbers for this budget. And just to let everyone know, the state aid numbers have been the same since 2010 with no, no increase or decrease. The public hearing for this budget is scheduled for May 3rd, 2021. And by the end of this week, the budget will be uploaded on the Borough's website for the public to view. And lastly, I just want to thank the Budget Committee, which was Council President Epinger, Councilwoman Mara, Councilman Seula and Administrator Arlandenski for their hard work and their input in the 2021 budget. That's it.
I have a chance to look at it. The hearing will be on in May there, as you said. Any questions for Joseph?
Uh, I'm getting old and forget things. Bill, do we, when we, is there a resolution or you just, or we just go by the we have to, we have to like introduce it and we have to vote on that. So how is that, is there a resolution or is it the resolution that's in? Oh, it is. I'm sorry. It's written at the top.
117.
Right. So it's slightly, the form is different than I was just, I didn't see the, yeah, you're right. Okay, thanks. Thanks, Bill.
No one else? Let's see, who else is here? How about Chief?
Mayor, I don't have anything for this meeting.
Okay, then. Mr. Sores?
Yes, Mayor, I only have one thing. Last week, we installed the new fountain at Daley's Pond.
Yes, we did.
Very impressive.
It looks great.
Go to, and if you want, Mr. Sores will be having, he's supplying popcorn and when the lights go on at eight o'clock, you can watch the different colored lights.
I just got 15 minutes.
That's all I have, Mayor.
I have a question, Adriano. For the parks, are we turning on the water fountains at all this year? Are we not doing that due to COVID?
We, we haven't done that in a while, Julie.
Yeah, I would say I don't think there's any, I don't think we'd be a art or Andrea, I don't think we we could be. I don't think we, I mean, as long as there, we're still, COVID restrictions, I don't think we should. I don't have any place that has water fountains up and running. At least I'm not aware of them.
Not even inside the schools. So at this point, no.
Even where I work, we can't, people are, said they can't use our water fountains either. They're all done. You can't use public.
Okay. Thank you. From the legal side, anything, Ms. Wyatt?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Okay, very good then. Mr. Bray?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Just two quick things. Resolution number 98 has been pulled and we are rebranding Resolution 118 as Resolution 98 in the consent agenda. And then we heard the governor announced today that the primary election will be held as elections are normally held, mostly in person. So that's a step in the direction towards normal. We had record turnout last year. So I would hope that everyone takes the opportunity to vote again, both in the primary and general election and and not lose the progress that we made in our national civic discourse. That's it.
Who's at the top?
Uh, top of the ticket this year? Oh, the governor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Governor and the entire legislature will be up. I don't know how much that's going to excite people, but we'll see. The acid test is, of course, the year that you wind up having like the state senator at the top of the ticket. That's the acid test to see how people are interested.
Yes.
Yes, Councilman Mara.
I have two questions. Any new mercantile license?
I issued a new mercantile license for two, one business, which is a sign company and another business, which is a herbal supplement store. We still have two eateries that have, I spoke with Health Department, their projects have kind of stalled out. They need to do their interior fit outs and they haven't done anything. And then there is just one more out on Whitehead, well, two more out on Whitehead Avenue that are still working towards being approved.
Okay. And did you want to explain to everybody that law that passed about the outdoor dining?
Oh, um, the for, are you talking about the ABC, the the COVID extension of premises or our resolution tonight? We have a resolution tonight which extends waiving of fees for outdoor dining permits, the permits required if you're going to be on public property like sidewalk. The state passed a law which extends all COVID-19 extension of premises permits through the end of next year. So folks that we approved, we approved several last year. This allows a licensed premise to serve alcohol outdoors as part of their license premise. But temporarily, it's not a permanent increase in their license premise. And those permits have been extended.
Oh, thank you.
Hey, very good. Mr. Landensky.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything for you tonight, but I have with us the Borough's consultant on the upgrading of the water treatment plant, Mr. Mike Fury from Agroenvironmental, who would like to give a short report on the progress.
Please, Mr. Fury, turn your.
Yes, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Good. All right. Thanks. Thanks, Mayor and Council for allowing me to speak. Art asked me to come to the meeting tonight to talk about it, give you an update on the progress we've made at the treatment plant. Once again, my name is Mike Fury. I'm the owner and president of Agroenvironmental Laboratory Services. We're providing operational oversight as a consultant and we're also providing laboratory services for the Borough. We, it's been over probably a little less than two years since we became on board. And we've made significant progress since we came on board about a little less than two years ago. There is, there were identified by the DEP significant, you know, There is, there were identified by the DEP significant, you know, back end amount of, you know, compliance issues that we need to address. We've been working with various different contractors, Allied Construction on the filter job, on rebedding the filters. We've been working with Enza Corp. You know, Mr. Charles Seulus as the engineer overseeing the, you know, repairs to the controls and and various mechanical parts of the treatment plant. We've been also working with Mike's Mobile Maintenance, a contractor and various electricians. So we've made significant amount of progress and I really do, I got to thank, you know, we work with a lot of towns throughout the state of New Jersey, city of Trenton, city of Newark, Ringwood, smaller towns, Hawthorne. You know, the cooperation that we've had so far with Art and his staff has been excellent. They're very responsive to some of the needs of the treatment plant. We've, we've made significant progress towards upgrading the treatment plant. And we're, we're pretty much happy to announce that, you know, the treatment plant is back online and working, you know, pretty well. We recently had a inspection from the New Jersey DEP. Ms. Jamie Herzak and Taffy Asante from, you know, down in Trenton. They reviewed all the administrative order, some of the issues that we've, we've had in the past and they were they're pretty impressed with the amount of progress the borough has made. You know, and I'm pretty happy to announce that they, they gave a grade of, of an A from, from when they were there two, a little less than two years ago. So we are making that progress. Wanted to report that back to everybody. Just to let you know, there is, there are some things that need to be addressed. There are some, some minor repairs that we're still addressing. And then in May, early May, the first week of May, we're going to, we're going to look to do a flushing program for the system, which has, has been done in a couple of years. So expect some, you know, possibly some dirty water complaints from during the flushing operation, which will last, last a couple of weeks. We're relying less on East Brunswick's water supply and we're moving more towards relying on the groundwater supplies that are located at the treatment plant. When the, when the new well comes online, that'll make a significant, that'll be a significant progress for the borough. Where you can, you know, more rely on the groundwater supplies and less on the surface water supplies coming from Middlesex and East Brunswick. So I, I do give, you know, Art, we, I, Art, you know, Landenski is an excellent administrator. He's been very cooperative. We, we talk very often during the week and give, give updates on what's going on. But I wanted to let everybody know that we're, a lot of progress has been made and, and it's a real credit to the, to the borough and I, we thank you for the support that you've been providing. So if I want to turn it over, if anybody has any questions for me, if not now, you can, you call me anytime and hopefully I can answer the questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Fury. Thank you very much for that report. Glad to see that there's progress.
Thank you very much, everybody. Have, have a good night.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Landenski?
No, Mayor.
Okay, very good then. Then we'll go to our reports here. Looking at my screen, we'll start with Mr. Seula. Do you have anything to report?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'm in the process right now of organizing a Zoom meeting with our environmental committee and our new EDC. We're just correlating all the information with everybody so we can get this proper date set up and it will be meeting hopefully this week or next week, so I can have a full report by our next meeting. And just to touch base. I've been talking to a lot of the seniors in town. And they all have positive thank yous to Kim Bell. For the vaccines and all the work that she's done, getting the seniors their vaccines and arranging everything. So I just wanted to reach out to Kim, tell her thank you very much for all her hard work. And her, you know, making phone calls and all of that. I heard other towns, the seniors were trying to jump on board with our seniors. Just kept it for our seniors to make sure we were taken care of. And just so everybody knows too. To join the Office on Aging, you have to be fifty-five years old. So, I mean, it's free. You can go online and you can join the Office on Aging. If you need to ride the bus to go to appointments or whatever, you have to be sixty years old for that on the Office on Aging. And again, it's free to join. So if you wanted a borough website, you can join up. There's quite a few people I know that have been joining that are fifty-five and above. So just so everybody's out there, it's a great thing. And again, Kim, thank you for all your hard work and taking care of our seniors in town. And Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Ballas?
I have nothing at this time. I know the Board of Ed is having a meeting tonight. So they have school for the next couple of weeks and then they'll be on spring break. So maybe they'll give me some more information from tonight's meeting and our other. My other departments have not met because of COVID, so hopefully I'll reach out to them and see what's going to be going on with them soon.
I know they're also in their middle of their budget negotiation.
Right, yes.
Mr. Gertenski?
Thank you, Mayor. Few things too. I want to express my thanks to Kim Bell also for the work that she's done. And if there is anybody that's fifty-five and over, please explore the possibilities of joining the OOA. They do a fantastic job with events and different things that would be of very much interest to you. And also our DPW, it's the weather has turned. The boys are out there and are trying to patch the potholes as best as they possibly can, but it's a never ending job. So with that, our electric department too is, has to order more lights and everything too, like the decorative lighting downtown and the streetlights. They've run pretty low on supplies, so it's an ongoing thing. And our new fountain that back, as Mr. Sores had explained in Daily's Pond is up and, up and running. With that, that's all I have right now, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next zoning board meeting will be tomorrow. Call Mr. Mandanski for more details on how to zoom in. Our next planning board meeting is going to be April twentieth. Now for the Parks and Rec, I know I've had several calls coming in regards of registrations. Trying to get signed up for different activities that are supposed to be in the beginning of the spring as well as summer. I could tell you this. They will be reinstated on April thirty, I'm sorry, March thirty-first. We will hopefully pick up as soon as we can and take off with the programs. I know some of the programs are a little late. But we will work to make it easier for the town as well as the kids. So, you know, stay tuned and see what we can possibly do for you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mara?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had my Board of Health meeting. There was discussions on upcoming events, but currently that will be held, be put on hold until further notice. The food bank, the Girl Scout troop eight-two-one-one-six did a sock drive for the food bank and they were able to bring in one thousand, one hundred socks. So thank you to them. Also Corpus Christi Youth Group did a drive and they gathered up items that don't normally get donated to the food bank. So that was a great help for them. They were very appreciative of that. And also South River High School, I believe the student council did the Super Bowl drive and were able to bring some stuff to the food bank. So this really helps our food bank. Like I said a few meetings ago, our food bank did increase forty percent since COVID hit. So we'd like to say thank you to everybody who takes their time and donates at the food banks. The Board of Health also had some discussion of possibly helping with finding a way that we can help our residents register to get vaccinated, just like the Office on Aging was able to do that with our older community. We want to see if we can start up and maybe try to get it, whether it be in person or doing like a phone bank where we can help people register and sign up. That is something we're looking into doing. And we also want to say with the food bank, they're also doing that pet pantry for families that are in need that do have pets because they are worried and they don't want you to feel like you have to get rid of your pet because you can't feed it. So Stephanie Shando down at the Office on Aging has really helped out with the pet pantry. She has a set of items that they normally ask for, but she says also monetary donations or even gift card donations to certain pet places is very much appreciated as well. My Human Relations Commission met for the first time this month. I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, that I know you're going to appoint a new member today. And that we still have vacancies on our Human Relations Commission. So if anybody is interested and would like to volunteer, this is a great time to do so. The Human Relationship is hoping to still do flag raisings this year as they are outside and with things, the weather getting better and things slowly opening up. We hope that we can do that this year as well. But we'll keep you posted. And the Human Relations Commission has also stated that they do want to help with the Board of Health. If Board of Health, if they do want to register more people, I know a lot of our community sometimes has difficulty both on the computer or to speak English. And the Human Relations Commission would like to help with that. So people can register to get vaccinated. Mayor, I am also on the Mayor's Advisory Board of Persons with Disability, but I don't know who to contact for that as I know they only meet four times a year. But I don't know who's in charge of setting that one up. So I'd like to ask you about that. And that's all I have.
I think Teresa Hutchinson is involved with that, but I will check on that for you.
Okay, thanks.
And thank you. Glad to see that Relations is getting on there. And of course, the faithful Board of Health is operating very good. Mr. Eppinger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Although I think I want to report on this, it's, Mr. Zanga already went with through it. I want to, I want to thank Mr. Zanga, Mr. Landenski, Julie and Tony. For, we had several meetings, a lot of good thoughts and a lot of good discussions about not just the budget. But, but going forward and things we like to see try to get done in the borough with our Budget Committee, Finance Committee meeting. So I want to thank everybody for their time and effort for getting that done. The Library Board meeting is scheduled for tomorrow night. We're having some, Evelina is not feeling too well. She's having some reactions to her COVID shot, so the meeting may be postponed or moved, but you'll have to check to the website of the library for that. But the trustees meeting is scheduled for tomorrow night at seven o'clock. And also, we have heard from the folks who would like to see the, the green team would like to see the garden reopen again this year and we through the Mayor's office and myself, we let everybody know that whatever they need to help to get it, to try to get the garden back up and running this year after a year of COVID. We're certainly here to help and so you may check the website and you may be seeing some things in the very near future. If at all possible, to get the community garden down on the Quasway up and running again. So that's what I have for right now, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, there was a email from the director saying that she will deliver the packets to everyone tomorrow afternoon, which would be Tuesday and send a Zoom link out for Thursday afternoon.
Well, we're going to just, we need to, we heard I need to, we need to have a chat about that before we start moving meetings.
And not touching that with a ten foot pole.
I don't think you really want to tonight.
I have no comments, but we now open up to the public. Please give your name and address. You will be given ten minutes to make comments. We were going to keep it to ten minutes because others wish to speak. You can literally raise your hand or do it electronically. Mr. Bray will recognize you.
Yes, Mr. Hutchinson would like to speak.
Yes, Teresa Hutchinson or James Hutchinson?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, Council. It's Jim Hutchinson, thirty eighth Virginia Street. Talking about the Pottery Lane issue. And I just wanted to add something as, what I recall, when I was a member of the council. I believe the chief is absolutely spot on. Believe we were looking at having it one way coming out onto Main Street. With a right turn, because there was that large tree right at the edge of the entryway, exitway of Pottery. So again, if my memory is correct, we were looking again, one way out of Pottery onto Main with a right turn only heading basically downtown, heading towards Satorville, not being able to make a left crossing traffic to head towards East Brunswick. So I wanted to add that on because I think that's what the chief was talking about. Again, when you go back to survey the residents and so forth, that, that may help in stirring some memory as to what actually we were looking to do some years back. Another issue associated with the water situation, as we start taking on more groundwater and taking less, let's say, from East Brunswick. Just want to make sure if that is something that is going to continue into the future where we're relying less on East Brunswick's water supply. We may want to take a look at the contract because again, we're taking a minimum amount on a daily basis and whether we take it or not, we're getting billed for that. And if we can reduce that, that certainly can be a helpful situation for the residents in town and the businesses, et cetera, as far as water usage, especially if, again, we're taking more groundwater versus taking it from East Brunswick where again, we don't have to worry about a ratchet, things of that nature. Good, again, save money and again, hitting the budget, less money for the residents and businesses in town. So just wanted to add those comments. Appreciate everything. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just respond to my good friend's comments there. He's a hundred percent right. One of the things that we've already started discussing is that as many of us folks who have been around real know that we are only allowed to take so much water per day from the aquifers in, with our wells. That was the reason why we had to enter into the contract with East Brunswick years ago. But in any event, Mr. Hutchinson is correct. One of the things that once the, once the well is, is complete and online and with our two auxiliary wells all up to stuff and everything like that, are, the goal is to take exactly what we're allowed to on a daily basis. And then when our contract comes due with East Brunswick, to take, to, to set it at a level that provides the water we need with obviously a little bit of a buffer, but to make sure that we are only paying for what we use. And that's one of the reasons why this amount of money has been expended in, in upgrading and renovating our water system in town. So Mr. Hutchinson is spot on on that.
Very good then. I see an electronic hand up, Mr. Bray?
Yes, that's Karen Kamback.
Kamback? The floor is yours.
Hi, yeah. Karen Kamback. I'm a Pottery Lane resident. I joined the call because I actually seen Pottery Lane was on the agenda and I was kind of curious what it was. The issue of, just throwing my two cents out here, the issue of a one-way street would actually inhibit Pottery Lane, to be totally honest. Living here for as long as I do, I actually use the street going towards Main Street, making a left to go to work. So going one way in, you know, going all the way down Pulaski, down. I don't even know the names of the streets down there. Anyway, to go all the way back to Jackson, to sit at the lights and make a left to get onto Main Street would actually inhibit, you know, time of getting to work. But I will say there is a parking issue, not necessarily parking in front of one's home. But there is a parking issue where people are parking into a very small roadway as it is. So just, just wanting to throw that out there. I don't think, there's only three residences on Pottery Lane. Um I know Councilwoman uh had said that she uh, you know, asked Pottery Lane residents. What they prefer and they prefer one way. I was not asked, but I. I don't see the three houses on this street being for a one-way. I don't want to speak for my neighbors, but. That's all I really wanted to throw out there.
Okay, very good.
That's good, good input.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Teresa Hutchinson also would like to speak.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Teresa Hutchinson, thirty eighth Virginia Street. Uh just wanted to uh let everyone know as the Chair of the Mayor's Advisory Committee on Persons with Disabilities. And also as the Chairperson of the Cultural Arts and Heritage Commission. We were pushed back a little bit because of COVID, but we will be resuming our meetings and we will. Uh make that uh known to uh the necessary parties when we when we establish our meeting dates. Uh but if anyone wants to reach out to me, uh I think uh Councilwoman Mira. Mentioned the Mayor's Advisory Committee. Please feel free to reach out and any any uh information I could provide, I certainly do so. Uh back to the Cultural Arts and Heritage Commission, um we will, as I said, we'll be resuming meetings. And uh we are uh trying to um. See what we can do about the Memorial Day Parade. Uh I already reached out to the Chief of Police. And uh I will be waiting for direction in terms of what is possible and what is not possible. Uh but do know that we do want to uh honor our fallen heroes and and we will. Do whatever uh whatever is allowed in order to make that happen. Uh that's all. Thank you very much and good evening.
If not a parade, what we did last year was very nice. Thank you. Is there anyone else on first call, second call, third call?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Gindy, seconded by Mrs. Ballas to close public portion. All in favor?
Aye.
Against the ayes have it. Moving on to the agenda, there is the mayoral appointment. As I stated before, this is simply ministerial. The appointment was made last month. Uh the consent resolutions, Mr. Bray.
Where is Resolution two thousand twenty dash oh one authorized Borough Council less consent agenda to adopt various resolutions of a routine non controversial nature at one time. Now therefore beaten is hereby resolved with the below listed resolutions hereby adopted by Borough Council and holds the same or individually acted law. Ninety-five approved permits status of Borough Employee ninety-six approved master plan reexamination by Big Neil Planning Consultant ninety-seven approve HCD block recommendations. Ninety-eight approved canyon requests South River Little League ninety-nine approved waving liquor license buyback fee. One hundred approved waving outdoor dining permit fees for two thousand one one oh one approved South River Board of Education April requisition for taxes and debt service. One oh two approved property tax refund seventy-seven Wilcox one oh three award contract two thousand twenty-one. Janitorial services tropical cleaning services one oh four prove outdoor dining permits. One oh five award contract for electrical substation maintenance to high energy electrical testing. One oh six approved. PS contract for commercial real estate professional service contract for commercial real estate praiser. One oh seven authorized CME to perform survey for electric utility audit. One oh eight authorized payroll deduction for group whole life plan. One oh nine authorized purchase of lighting fixtures via Bergen County Co-op one ten approve low SAP listing rate for two thousand twenty. One eleven award contract public works function utility maintenance to BMW construction. One twelve proof contract manuals. Auto parts supplies and electrical utility department materials. One thirteen point firefighter for reliable fire company Alfred one fourteen approve. March first two thousand twenty-one minutes one fifteen approve utility consumer refunds one sixteen approve bills.
Move the consent resolution as presented, Mr. Mayor. Motion has been made to approve by Mr. Eppinger, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas.
Yes.
Councilman Seela.
Yes, with the following extensions from Resolution one ten, one thirteen and one sixteen.
Councilman Gindy.
Yes, with the extension of uh consent resolution one ten, one thirteen and one sixteen.
Councilman Gurchensky.
Yes.
Councilman Mara.
Yes.
As President Eppinger.
Yes.
Resolutions have been adopted. Thank you. Onto new business, which is where we vote on an individual resolution that has been written separately. Today is the introduction of the twenty twenty-one municipal budget. Mr. Bray.
Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash seventeen municipal budget notice section one municipal budget of the Borough of South River County Mills six for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one be resolved with the following statement of revenues preparation show constitute municipal budget. Two thousand twenty-one be further resolved that said budget will be published in the Home News Tribune and the issue of April twenty-second two thousand twenty-one. The bot governing body of Borough of South River does hereby approve the following budget for the two thousand twenty-one. Notice is hereby given that budget and tax resolution approved by council members of the Borough of South River County Mills six March twenty-second two thousand twenty-one a hearing of budget and tax resolution will be held. At sixty-one Main Street remote virtual May third two thousand twenty-one at seven P M. What at which time place objections to said budget tax resolution of two thousand twenty-one may be presented by taxpayers or other interested persons.
Mayor, move the resolution as presented.
Check it.
Motion has been made by Mr. Eppinger, seconded by Mr. Seola. There's no discussion at this point. It's simply being introduced. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas.
Yes.
Councilman Seela.
Yes.
Councilman Gindy.
Yes.
Councilman Gurchensky.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mara.
Yes.
Council President Eppinger.
Yes.
Thank you. We shall revisit this in May. Governing body comments for the good and welfare of the borough and everybody changed all of a sudden on my screen, so um. Well, I was gonna go backwards, but let me start with Mr. Seola then.
All right, thank you, Mayor. I do a couple of quick things. Um again, our DPW is out there uh patching holes. So just be aware, if you see the guys in the street, please uh drive slowly and cautiously around them. Um our electric utility is out there as uh Mr. Gurchensky said, we are purchasing uh the new lights for the poles. When we started this back in two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. Um we did a testing on it again at that time. And once all the poles have been retrofitted with the LED lights. Um the borough would save at that point about fifty-nine thousand dollars a year in the purchase of electric. So again, uh it's a great thing that we're doing. Uh thanks to the electric and the governing body for making sure we get this all done. It'll be a good savings for the residents. So uh with that, Mayor, it's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Mr. Gindy.
Yes. The last meeting, uh one of the residents reached out to me in regards of an idea which I thought was a pretty decent idea. Regards of informing the town on whenever we're as a governing body, we're replacing uh. Let's say cars, trucks, if there's issues with things, maybe we could post it on our website. Just giving them a heads up on what their taxes are actually paying for. That way they're not caught off guard. It was uh it was an idea. We spoke for quite a while and. I think that's something we should try to get together, put it together. Uh maybe we could, like I said, post it on the internet if it's possible on our website. That's one thing. The other thing that I wanted to bring up was I know like earlier in our meeting, I was talking about the Parks and Rec. Um just keep yourself cool. It's gonna be back up come March thirty-first uh uh. All activities will be back up. Uh I know it's not gonna be easy in the beginning, but uh talking to the uh. The residents, I know they're eager to get the kids out there and uh, you know, playing in some of these sports that should have been filed. Uh other than that, um whether it's getting better. Please be aware of kids now are going out, you know, playing, uh riding their bicycles and try to keep it safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mara.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh first, I'd like to say that March twenty-first yesterday was National Down Syndrome Day. The uniqueness of the triplication of the twenty-first chromosome which causes Down syndrome. They picked March twenty-first specifically for that reason. Um so I know a lot of people and some people in town and people that I know celebrated yesterday. Um the Mr. Gindy just spoke about the uh Parks and Recs being down. So I just want everybody to know that even though our Parks and Recs um isn't going on right now. We do have the South River Little League that just started. I know we just passed so that they could um. Do some canning for that. I know that they're still looking for people. I don't know if the registration has passed already, but they're always looking for kids to go out for the Little League. And uh the South River Future Stars. Um their spring registration opened up. They have travel team and recreational from kid for kids from ages four to eight. Um and for the older kids as well for the travel team. So if anybody's interested, I know it's been around on Facebook for the South River Future Stars. It is a local uh organization. Uh I also want to mention that uh one of our teachers here in town, Alda Maltese, opened up a GoFundMe page for uh. One of our students here in South River. He's ten years old. His name is Victor. And he's looking for a kidney transplant. Um I know the family is struggling a little bit because he does have other siblings. So of any bit, any little bit of help is appreciated. So there is a GoFundMe page for him. He is a resident here in South River. Um and other than that, Mr. Mayor, we're constantly looking for people to come help. And um be a part of our organizations. Thank you for Teresa Hutchinson for letting me know that she was the Chair. I did not know that she was the Chair for the um Mayor's Advisory Board, so I will be in contact with her and I'm hoping that all our. Boards here in town can slowly start having meetings. I know I've been uh. Getting everybody to get up on these um Zoom meetings because it is helpful. I know everybody's. Tired of being stuck at home. My kids can't wait for April nineteenth when they get to go to school four days a week instead of two. Um but you know, the weather is getting better and that's what's getting our hopes. That we're going in the uh better direction. Other than that, I have nothing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Gurchensky.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh first off, I'd like to extend my thanks to the police, our fire and uh Robert Wood Johnson for taking care of us. In any of our situations that may dictate. Our DPW does an outstanding job and everything like that to picking up a lot of stuff. They're patching the hot, the uh potholes out there as best as they can. And uh also, I'd like to mention to landlords and the people about leaving things out at the curb unless you call in. The DPW and schedule a date to pick it up. Um please do so and don't leave it at the curb for possibly days at a time. It is pretty unsightly and it does reflect upon uh the township and it does make us look uh. Not very good. Also, I'd like to uh ask a lot of the uh residents, being warmer, there's a lot more open doors and everything. Windows and what have you. People are enjoying the outfit. Uh please mind your neighbors. Don't play your music excessively so the whole block hears it. Um if you don't mind, thank you. With that, Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ballas.
Uh yeah, as uh Mr. Gindy said, the weather has gotten nicer after. We've all been cooped up in over the winter. Please be careful of. The dog walkers, the pedestrians, the bicyclists, the skateboarders, the motors, you know, every the scooter riders. Um I know the kids want to get out there and and play, but we have to be careful of of watching out for them. The weather will bring out. More and as Mr. Mr. Gurchensky also with the with the windows and just be careful if you're gonna have your front and back doors open. I'm gonna say maybe be careful with safety wise. Um. And. Um we will not meet again until after Easter, so I would like to wish you all a happy Easter. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Eppinger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um I know the one thing that uh is coming up, it's the first one that I've heard of in a while. Uh the Knights of Columbus on uh Palm Sunday. Are going to be having a breakfast between nine and twelve at the uh VFW. For those of you who uh. Are want to go out and uh. See, so see, probably see some people for the first time in a while if you're up to it, if you feel comfortable and safe, help support a good cause. And just to kind of, well, the only other thing I really have for for tonight is uh to kind of piggyback on what everybody else has been saying. The weather is getting nicer. You know, people are get, people are getting their their COVID shots. People are being, they're getting out more often. Um and which is good. You know, we all need to see people. We all need fresh air. We all need to to change our routines after a year of this craziness. Um but but the kind of like what Mr. Gurchensky was saying, now just be, you know, uh remember. You do live in it, you know, we live in, you do have neighbors. Um and you know, we're gonna, people will start social gathering again. Um and 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 not like just loud music, but uh loud parties and stuff like that. Again, nobody's saying that you have to uh make it like a church service. But do keep in mind that you do have neighbors who have, who would like to enjoy their life as well. And I know already this weekend, we've gotten a couple of complaints about about uh extremely loud music. You know, like I said, and as I said in during our public safety meeting tonight, uh Frank Sinatra was not on their, was not on their playlist. So it was, you know, so just again, enjoy yourself, enjoy your friends, enjoy your family, enjoy your neighbors. But do it uh uh while also respecting everybody around you. Um and like uh Mr. Gurchensky said, please um. Call for heavy pickups. Mr. Suarez and Company do an outstanding job. Um you know, uh take advantage of that of that pickup service, but don't just leave things up, you know. We saw a couple of things this weekend that where people put on on their curb on on Saturday. You know, and they just sat on some major ma- major uh roadways for all weekend, which is unsightly, but uh. And it's also, you know, can also be dangerous and uh and uh what have you. But uh with that being said, again, I wish everybody a happy Easter Passover season. I know we're uh, it's hard to believe that the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-one is over. And I hope everybody is remaining safe. And uh one last pitch for this, the Office on Aging, you know, not just. Everybody's uh like Tony mentioned and and everybody else has. The Office on Aging is again, one of the, we have, I would, I would stack our Office on Aging against anybody in the county, probably in the state. The amount of programs. That are offered, many free of charge, many at very reduced costs. And again, um they, you know, my, many people don't know this, but Kim and her staff has have spent the past year. Back calling a lot of the of their um. Members to make sure that they're okay and if they need anything. So it's, you know, it's physical and mental and and we did do a great, she does a great job and they do a great job and. Uh as Mr. Zanga will smile for is that uh uh she is one of the best grant grant receivers we've got. I mean, she literally has almost funded her entire operation this year. From grant money. And that all goes in every dollar that 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 Kim and her group get. Gets plowed right back into, right back into the borough and its residents. So again, a lot of good things going on with the Office on Aging. And I know Mr. Gindy is gonna make sure. That things are gonna get up and running uh for for our kids. For uh for the rec department as well. So enjoy the nice weather, enjoy the spring and we'll uh we'll we'll chat soon. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very good, very well pointed out. You know, with a lot going on in our country concerning uh. The things that are happening to various groups, whether African Americans or Asian Americans. A lot of the problems begin right with the individual. When a person doesn't care about their neighbor, about the people who live next door, about their community. You're gonna have problems. You put out your stuff, your garbage or whatever, you're out by the curb. And it sits there for days on end. The whole town looks junky. You play your music loud at night, bothers other people. I'm not gonna think kindly of you. You're bothering them. You have the loud trucks and cars that go by. While complaints all over town about them. Be considerate of others. It's a simple thing. Just be considerate. Think of another person. Not just yourself. The world will be a better place. As Councilwoman Mara said, volunteer. We need people in organizations and not just in the town, but. All the other fraternal organizations that exist out there. The Lions Club, the Moose, the Elk, yes, they still are around. Not in South River, but they're still around. There's uh for the children, you know. You know, there are the scouts. There's other organizations. Need people. You can volunteer for them. Volunteer that had a chance to say goodbye was to Michael Beck. The Chair, longtime Chair of the Planning Board. We had a nice little talk and congratulated him as he has moved to another town. We wished him well and we received a plaque for his services. We need good people to serve. Please consider it. Mr. Bray announced, we are going to have the primary this year in person. The chairs of the political parties are gonna need uh challengers and poll workers, so. Contact them if you're interested in working on a poll. Finally, there's a lot coming up over the next few weeks. We're having one of the top religious times of the year. So let me wish a blessed and happy Passover. Holy and Easter to all of our citizens. Is there anything else to come before us? If not, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Eppinger, seconded by Mr. Gindy. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? The ayes have it. We'll see you in three weeks. Good night.